Good evening and welcome to the Bella Vista City Council meeting for Monday, October the 26th. If you'll stand, please, we'll have the invocation by Pastor Brian Fink and followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, Son, Holy Spirit, we praise you for this day and give you thanks for all that you have blessed us with. I ask, Holy Spirit, that you'd be with every person who has come here this evening and that somehow you'd surprise them with grace. You know what's going on in their lives, you know what that one thing is, that if you were to touch or somehow work in and through would just unlock the rest of their life and just some great things would happen. Please, if it's not too much to ask, surprise them with your grace tonight. We pray for the leadership of this city, Lord, that has been formed, and you ask us to pray for those in leadership over us, and so we ask for your favor to rest upon them in their personal lives as well as in their public lives, and that you give them wisdom and insight and courage to make those decisions on behalf of the wonderful people of Bella Vista, that this city would prosper and grow, that everybody would get along and be happy, and this place would just be one of those places everybody wants to come and be part of. We pray for all those people behind the scenes who do the roadwork and who do the work of the officers and the police and the fire department and you name it. We just ask you to bless them, Lord, because they're such a blessing to us. Now watch over us tonight. May we somehow put a smile on your face and smiles on all the citizens of this incredible city that we have. This I pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Call the roll. Alderman Morgan?
Here.
Alderman Flynn?
Here.
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman King?
Here.
Alderman Wozniak?
Here.
Alderman Wilson is absent. Thank you. We move into the citizen input. We have a number of speakers this evening. We finally have our speaker mic working over here, so if you use that one so that we can get you on camera, I'd be grateful. First up is Doug Farner.
Doug Farner, 6 Hartford Lane. I want to speak tonight regarding the property tax increase for streets. Some would say that we're getting along just fine, but economically I don't see how that's quite possible because over the last, since we incorporated as a city, we've been spending close to a million dollars a year on streets. Inflation alone would tell us that we're actually spending less or at least getting less done. Improving our streets will improve the city's image, which will help property values, which will help bring new people here and new businesses, and we need all of those. Some would say that we need to keep the remaining two and a half mills for an emergency. Well, from the incorporation, from the time of incorporation until I went off the council three years ago, the two most pressing needs were a new fire station and streets. Well, the new fire station is on its way now. That leaves just the streets. And that's not to say we won't have an emergency in the future, but if we did have a true emergency, we would still have one and a half mills left, and we would still, as a city, have the option of going to the citizens to ask for a sales tax increase or additional property tax, and that would only be in a true emergency. And I believe that Mayor Christie has explored a whole lot of options about how to finance the needs for the streets, and I believe that the one that's being presented tonight is the best at this time. I personally don't want a tax increase, but I don't mind having a tax increase if we're getting something specific for it, and it looks like in this case we could get something specific for this tax increase. Therefore, I'm in favor of the increase of one mill as long and providing that that one mill is dedicated to the streets and it is in addition to what we have been spending for the past several years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farner. Mr. Banks?
Brian Banks, 38, Kensington Drive, and I'm rated good on my street, that is. There was a quote in the newspaper from one of the aldermen saying that the streets aren't any worse than anybody else's. I'm assuming that's referring to Northwest Arkansas. I would like to say that I disagree with that assessment. I've lived in Northwest Arkansas for more than six decades. I have lived in Bentonville, Rogers, Fedville, and now Bella Vista, and I've certainly driven the streets many times in P Ridge, Lowell, Salem Springs. Without a doubt, Bella Vista has the worst streets and is in dire need of improving. What is being proposed is not lavish, but just the bare minimum to get to an acceptable level. I live on a major street that was rated as good by Bella Vista standards. The actual condition of the street is poor. I provided pictures to look at tonight that I have, that I took today, and I could have had 100 more, but that serves the purpose. The pavement is, at the edges, is broken and separated from the street and is in chunks. The alligator cracking is from one side of the street to the other. There are probably even more concerning but hard to photograph, there are areas in the street that are depressed and sinking. You can't take a good picture of that and provide it, but that indicates that there is a lack of stability under the street in those areas, and those are numerous spots. I would, I would say this, kind of in a general standpoint, Kansas City, Tulsa, even Rogers, Arkansas, recognize that to have a better city, the city has to invest in itself, and that is what we're talking about, is investing in ourself as a city. I believe it is time for Bella Vista to decide, is it going to be a real city and more than just a cheap place to live? Thank you, and I ask that you please consider the future and not just what has been always done in the past. Sometimes cheap is not the best answer. Thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
What is your address?
38 Kensington Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lloyd?
Hi, Linda Lloyd, 102 Fairway Drive, and I'm also here to speak about the millage increase. As a real estate broker, I'm out driving many hundreds of miles every week in Bella Vista, seven days a week, with people who are oftentimes looking to relocate to Bella Vista from other places, and I'm extraordinarily proud to show them our city except for the roads. And I get a lot of negative comments about the roads, and I say, "Well, we just took over the street department a couple of years ago, and we're trying to do our best to remedy the situation." Some people think that that's okay, but I'm reminded of the old car commercial, "You can pay me now or you can pay me later," and I'm very willing to pay my fair share and have a tax increase dedicated to the roads. The other issue I see is it's very difficult for me to market a home that is located on a road that is in very bad condition, and that's tough for people who may be retiring or have to go to, say, Concordia and who really need to sell their homes. So I applaud the mayor's proposal for a tax increase for the roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Talent?
Anna Talent, 9 Muswellburg Lane. My letter to all of you was in regards to the ordinance, sign ordinance. We had a garage sale three weeks ago, spent two days of hard work setting up the garage sale, and two of my signs were removed by the city, and I just feel that it's really unfortunate that in your ordinance you have a five-sign limit when most of the people here, if you pulled up a map to try to get to all the homes in Bella Vista, you would not be able to get to all of them with five signs off of a matter of fare. With that, you're discriminating against all of us that live twicks and turns all around. Bella Vista isn't just a straight shot to anywhere, and the five-sign ordinance is just not workable. Also, part of that is you're requiring a lot of information to be put on the sign, which is personal information. I wouldn't want some weirdo getting all sorts of information off of the back of a sign to be able to find me at a later date. My address was on the sign, my phone number was on the sign, the day I was having it was on the sign, I was within the amount away from the street, and two signs were removed. My sales were totally shot for that weekend, so Helping Hands got a huge donation, and it was really unfortunate, and I just feel that it needs to be resolved. We're a city, and you shouldn't eliminate people from having a successful sale to help eliminate their stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Talent. Appreciate that. Mr. Pointer? Lucas? No. Bob Schmidt?
My name is Bob Schmidt, and I was here in August of last year speaking about the need for guardrails in Bella Vista. I outlined a couple of deaths that took place in the last few years where guardrails may have at least helped recover the victim in an expeditious manner. But to this date, here we are in last part of October, and I have not seen anything, read anything, heard anything about guardrails in Bella Vista. I hear a lot about streets. I see an article in the newspaper about $13 million needed for the repair of the streets. What about the safety of the people that drive in the streets? Why is that? Why have I not seen anything about that? I'm asking the city council, I'm asking the mayor, I'm asking anybody, why have we not heard anything or you've done anything about guardrails?
If I remember correctly from last year, you're really concerned about 340, is that correct?
I'm concerned about 340, I'm concerned about 279, I'm concerned about the death in April of a lady off of Highlands Boulevard. She went down an embankment 60 foot, she was 100 foot off the road. I can show you some pictures, I got some pictures of her car. If we'd had guardrails there, perhaps she would be walking today, she would perhaps be alive today. So I, I want to know why, here we are a year or so later, we have not heard anything about guardrails. $13 billion for streets, but nothing for guardrails.
I have spoken to Steve Lawrence, who's the district engineer with the state, about guardrails on 340 and 279. So far, all I'm hearing is that we're looking at it. We're also looking, just so you know, because there's competing priorities for different dollars, how do we solve the congestion on Highway 71 as well? That's also a major issue. But I thank you for this. I am talking to them, but no progress has been made.
There were a couple of articles about cable barriers, so I, I think cable barriers may be an alternative to guardrails. Cable barriers are $12 a linear foot, guardrails are $17 a linear foot. And, and, and the question comes in my mind, where do you start? And I, I think starting, we could pick one and put one in, and maybe in 50 years, we might have the problem solved. So I ask the city council, I ask the mayor, I ask anybody who is interested in the lives of the people that drive in Bella Vista, they deserve a break. They deserve something besides just better streets. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the names on the sign-up sheets. Is there anyone who would like to speak to council? Okay, thank you. Moving along, approval of minutes of the last meeting, September the 28th. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, errors, or omissions? Show of hands if you approve. Same against? Carrie, thank you. Chris, can you put up the financials, please? As we do every month, I've been showing you the financials and bar charts, and let me just give you the Cliff Notes, and the Cliff Notes are available at the back, too, if you so desire. On the revenue side, if you remember correctly, we have two accounts. We have a general operating account and we have a streets account, and that we have to do by law because of turnback dollars from the state, we have to keep streets separate. So on the revenue side for the general operating account, we were $29,000 favorable. That's within tolerance, so I did not delve down to try and find what $29,000 might have been. On the street department, it was unfavorable by 210, and that was because a planned transfer of $200,000 from the operating account was not required, so we did not move it. On the expense side, the general operating account is $64,000 favorable. It's a combination of four different things. The police is 143K unfavorable with the new Tahos that we bought. This is a timing issue. It was in a different month, we thought that we would get them earlier, and we did not. Also, the administration is 24K unfavorable. That was the purchase of a new electronic filing system called M-Files, similar to Laserfish, if you're familiar with that product. And again, it was timing. We did not have the product up and running in the month in which we had originally forecast. On the plus side, capital projects were 23K favorable, and then there was the transfer to streets, which did not occur, which was 200K. On the expenses on the street department, we were 67K unfavorable. Most of it, $50,000, is sitting in equipment greater than $1,000, which is the purchase of a new emulsion tank, which stores liquids that we use for street patching. In past years, we have rented, and Superintendent Button was able to find a good tank for us, so we purchased it. Our reserve is currently 8.6 million. In August, it was 8.7. We have net income year-to-date of 2.4 million. In August, it was 2.6. Remembering that we do have some large paving bills coming up, for those of you that may have been driving around, you'll see that there's a lot of activity this week in trying to catch up with the paving. Also, I might add with roads, you may have seen on the webpage or driving around that Commonwealth is closed in one section. You may remember that it was very, very narrow and a little treacherous if you met another car. We've combined with the county, and they are in the process of widening it, and then they are going to pave it. Hopefully, if all goes well, it'll be finished this week. Moving into the heart of the meeting, I would entertain, entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Jerkson? Okay. Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0. Thank you. First piece of business is an ordinance going into third reading. It's one of our all-time favorites. It's amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to modify the hours of permissible door-to-door solicitation to bring provisions within constitutional limits. Is there any discussion?
I will say again, I will vote for this ordinance, but I'm against it. I know it is to keep the city out of potential litigation. I don't want anybody coming to my door at 8:30 or 8:45 or 9 o'clock selling encyclopedias or vacuum cleaners or whatever else they now sell door-to-door, but I understand this is something the city has to do. I have voiced my objection to this on the three work sessions and this, the third, but I understand it's something we have to do just to keep ourselves out of litigation.
Thank you. Other discussion? Alderman?
Recommend approval of the ordinance.
Second?
Cassie, where do we stand in the little no solicitation plaques that we were going to put out? Okay. So those will be free to anybody who wants to come in the office, City Hall office, and pick one up, slap it on your door, and they're now supposed to come over.
Okay. So we have a motion by Alderman Anderson, a second by?
Second.
Alderman King? Seconded by Wozniak. Oh, Wozniak? Okay, thank you. Okay. Roll call, vote. Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0. Thank you. The next ordinance is equally as popular. It's amending Section 6-2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to modify the referendum period for ordinances to 60 days for all non-bond issue ordinances and 30 days for all bond issue ordinances declaring an emergency and for other purposes. This is the third reading. Again, counselor, this is to bring us into compliance?
Yes, sir. Last legislative session, the state legislature passed a law that required us to provide 60 days. I believe there's a legal argument that the city does have the legal authority to set its own limit, however, in order, again, in order to avoid potential litigation and to basically let someone else maybe have that fight, I'm going to suggest that we just bring ourselves into compliance with what the state is saying, and then if in the future we can modify this back down, and that's what you want to do, we can always do that again in the future, but right now, this will put us into full compliance with all the statutes that this legislature has passed.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'm equally opposed to this, and I have said it before, and I will say it again. I will vote for it to keep us out of litigation, and as far as I'm concerned, every ordinance we pass will come under the emergency clause.
Any other discussion? Okay.
Recommend approval of the ordinance.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Alderman King?
Reluctantly, yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
I vote with Alderman King reluctantly, yes.
Carrie, 5-0. Thank you.
Mayor, we need to have a separate motion and a second on the emergency clause. There's, this ordinance has an emergency clause?
Mm-hmm.
Recommend approval of the emergency clause.
Second?
Doesn't it have to wait 60 days?
That's right.
What's up with that?
It's the Constitution change.
Everything's an emergency from now on.
Is that a question? The reason I put the emergency clause on there is so that we can lengthen the amount of any possible confusion for any ordinances that we're about to adopt as to whether it's 30 or 60 days. If you adopt it right now, we know what it is, it's going to be 60, and so it clears us up for any possible cloudiness relating to anything you may adopt tonight or you would have adopted last month or next month.
Who was the second?
Was.
Was, okay, thank you. Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to thank the council on both of those prior ordinances, and it's not easy to come to you and say you need to do something you really don't want to do, and you all are very kind and listen and are good clients, so I just want to congratulate you on that, and this will protect us, so thank you.
Thank you. The next piece of business is an ordinance authorizing borrowing of an amount not to exceed 2.4 million pursuant to the Arkansas Constitutional Amendment 78 for the financing of the new street department facility, along with various capital assets included therein, by issuance of a promissory note providing for security for the repayment of the promissory note, providing for the payment of the principal of and interest on the note, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. At our work session last month, we had been talking about this. It's a way of preserving some of the money that we would have spent by paying cash to be able to turn that into street money as well. There had been a suggestion by one of the aldermen that we actually take some of the lower-priced items for the new street department and work that into the budget of next year. That would include such things as furnishings, security fencing, an air compressor, a vehicle lift for the mechanic's bay, a crane lift for the mechanic's bay, tire mounting and balancing equipment, a shelving system, and a bulk oil system. We also have some larger expenses, and it was decided or suggested to me at that work session that we finance the payments remaining for 2016, which is approximately 1.3 million, and that the larger items that we would like to have in the street building be included in that financing, and that includes $246,000 for a salt and sand storage building. The federal government has issued an unfunded mandate to all cities that you are no longer permitted to have sand and salt for your winter roads simply sitting on dirt. It must now be covered, and it must be on a cement base with cement stem walls, and that little gem is 246. We have also set aside $136,500 for heavy, heavy equipment storage. We have a lot of heavy equipment, probably not a good idea to have it out exposed, and so the superintendent has asked that we have a storage building. Will this have sides on it, Mike?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Finally, or sorry, not quite finally, another large item is a fuel depot for $221,000. We currently do not have our own fuel. We go to local establishments with a pay card or a purchasing card, and we fill up where we could be piggybacking on a state bulk gasoline if we had our own pumps. Is the payback immediate? No. This is a long-term payback project, but one that will permit all the city vehicles to fill up in one location. Finally, $125,000 for asphalt paving, which will be the circumference and the entrance into the new streets to building, which will be up on, on 279. So that's the breakdown in detail. Are there any questions?
So that's all on the 2.4 million?
Yes. The way we're going to do it, Alderman, is we may not need 2.4 million. We built in some contingencies for price increases and other things that tend to go bump in the night on large projects. We're going to draw it as we need it. We've been talking to the bank who successfully won the business. For the first year, we will do interest only, and we will only draw as needed, and then the second year, we will start with principal and interest with the payments, and that will give us a bit more flexibility this year.
Now, I want to see everything put in there at once. I don't want to piecemeal it out over the years. I want it piec, I want it all in at once. I don't want it piecemealed over the years, because if you do that, it's not going to happen. And almost everything he mentioned is, they need to operate now, not in six weeks, six months, it's here. Whatever, when he need to open a bill, it needs to be turnkey. You don't want to be adding stuff after the fact.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions? Alderman Flynn?
Well, I'd just like to note the interest rate is 1.825%, so it's extremely low rate, so I think it's a great way to extend our cash flow with very little expense.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? I'd entertain a motion to approve, please.
Mayor, this is an ordinance, so this is the first reading.
Oh, excuse me.
And so if you want to go ahead and move ahead and finalize this tonight, it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading.
Yes, thank you. I would like to suspend the rules and go to final reading. Yes, thank you. I would like to suspend the rules and go to final reading. A motion, please.
So moved.
Second. All in favor of suspending the rules? Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. I'll now do the third and final reading authorizing borrowing of an amount not to exceed two point four million pursuant to Arkansas Constitutional Amendment Seventy-eight for the financing of the new street department facility, along with various capital assets included therein, by issuance of a promissory note, providing for security for the repayment of the promissory note, providing for the payment of the principal of and interest on the note, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
And then we go into an emergency motion as well, counselor?
We have an emergency clause in this one as well, so it'll need to be a motion and second to adopt the emergency clause.
Okay, motion to accept the emergency clause?
So moved.
Thank you.
And this is for?
This one we just passed.
Oh, okay.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. The next is a resolution authorizing and levying the millage rate of Advalar real and personal property tax for the City of Bella Vista, Arkansas, for the year 2015 to be collected in 2016. Regardless of the outcome of this, we must pass this this evening. It is a requirement by law that we submit to Benton County what our millage is going to be for the upcoming year. There has been some confusion in some of the press as to five mills versus three and a half, and so let me explain it if I may. Under Arkansas law, a municipality is permitted to increase its millage rate to a maximum of five mills on the real estate tax for general operating expenses. We are currently at two and a half, so we have another two and a half in the bucket. Some people have said, but wait a minute, last fall, we voted on a millage increase, and that is correct. But it is separate. It's not part of the total of the five mills that we can raise. This one had to go to an election because it is a special millage that is set aside by the state that we can use for police and pension. And if you remember, there were two mills that we could have asked for. The council at that time asked for one and a half, and it was approved. And what it did was take the police and fire pensions out of the operating budget and move it into this dedicated pension fund so that we would have the money freed up on the operating side to be able to hire the firefighters for new Fire Station Number Four. So that is completely separate from what we are talking about tonight. There are handouts at the back. One is from the Street Committee that was headed up by Alderman Flynn, giving a chronological detail of each and every step that we have taken through the Streets Committee right to where we are this evening, which is my request for an increase of one mill to go towards the street repairs. Also at the back, there is a letter that I wrote to the governor asking for a fifty percent match, which he didn't say no, but he asked me to get in touch with the Highway Task Force, which I have done, and I've never heard back from them, so I can assume I think that we're on our own. There is also a description back there about, do you know what a mill is? And I know that there is some confusion because if you look around the country, when I was in Arizona, for example, we were taxed at fair market value, which means whatever the county thought that I could sell my house for, I would pay millage on that. We do not have that here. We work on assessment. So, for example, if your home is worth, let's say, two hundred thousand, but it's assessed by the county for tax purposes at forty thousand, then you pay on the forty thousand, not the two hundred, so that a one-mill increase is forty dollars a year. So I hope that helps explain it to you, because I know there has been some confusion. But as I say, we do have to pass this tonight in one form or other in order to be compliant with the county. Questions, comments?
Sir? I've heard all the comments about the mill and how little it raises, that we need it for streets. I think we've gone through a discussion tonight where we're seeing that there's a lot of money in the budget that we can do different things for. I think the millage rate is the easy way to go. I don't believe the millage rate that we still have is going to be necessary for emergencies. I think it's going to be necessary to keep our employees employed in the next few years. If you take a look at some of our employee areas right now, we can't keep people that work in the street department. We can't find dispatchers because our rates are so low. So we're going to need money in the not-too-distant future for employees. If we use it for streets, it's gone. I think we still have money in the budget that we can put that same amount into the streets that we're talking about getting out of this millage. So for those reasons, I'm making the recommendation that we change this particular resolution to read under the General Fund Operations, two point five mills. Leave the police pension fund where it is, the fireman's pension fund where it is, and the total then would be four point oh mills. That's my motion.
Okay. I should add that we are working on the 2016 budget right now. The areas where we have concern about retention of employees is in the street department and in the police department. And I have sat down both with Chief Farmer and the Superintendent Button, and we have been able to put in place a change in the minimum, midpoint, and maximum, and also to give an increase to bring us not back up to where Bentonville is, we could never afford that, but to a much better place. And then we must be rigorous going into two years, every two years, looking at the minimum, the midpoint, and the maximum for all jobs. We will be able to achieve that next year without having to ask you for any kind of mill increase. I should add, as well as having the one point five mills, if you agree with the three and a half, I am also keeping three point three million in the reserve at all times, which is three months of our monthly burn rate of one point one million. Okay. Do we have a motion on the table, sir?
Motion is on the table.
Seconder?
Second.
And again, I understand that we're making progress on those things. By raising the low, mid, and high, we have not helped out our employees to get them above or up to mid. We have a lot of ten-year employees that are nowhere close to the midpoint. So there's additional monies needed for employees in addition to just changing those particular points.
And we are doing that as well.
If there's money for that, and we found it that easy, I would suggest we look a little harder. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
If we take the millage, there's no real incentive to look.
Okay. Discussion?
If this is passed and goes through, can it be set for a minimum number of years and then taken back down?
You set the millage every year, so each year you make a choice. It could be zero, it can be up to five on the job.
But it can be lowered also.
Oh, yes.
That's the point I was going to make, is that this is a vote just for 2016, just for one year. And so all this talk about emergency money, or we might need money down the road somewhere, this is a matter of starting to do a little something better for the streets and doesn't really impact any of those long-term problems.
Alderman Wozniak?
That's if anybody really believes the millage is ever going down. I've been in a lot of cities, I've been in a lot of states, I've never seen the millage go down once it gets there. Even the ten-year Sunset at once, they voted in for something else. Once it goes up, it's not going down.
Alderman Wozniak?
A mile of pavement is seventy thousand?
That's what I'm told, yes.
Your one mill is about four hundred and sixty?
Right.
That's about seven miles a year.
That's about it.
You've got how many class red roads?
We have a hundred and fifty-six, but we do not have to use asphalt overlay on all of them. This year, for example, we completed, or we are in the process of completing thirty miles, twenty-two of those miles were slurry, and the balance is asphalt overlay.
But you're going to need, when the highway starts to go bad, they all have to be blacktop overlay. So what you're doing, you're going to take a mill, and it's a drop in the bucket from what your problem is. It's a start, granted, but it's a drop in the bucket. As far as it going away, I can agree with Frank. Once it's there, you're going to need it every year, every year.
You're never going to be perfect on roads.
And if the oil goes up, those are seventy.
That's right. But at least we've got a plan, and we've got to start somewhere. Any other thoughts?
Well, I'd just like to point out, at our current rate, for instance, in 2015, we did asphalt overlay on seven miles of roads. So if we keep spending like we are right now on roads, we will pave your road once every sixty-nine years. So ask yourself if you think that's good enough or not.
Other thoughts?
I won't be here.
Anybody else have any thoughts? Okay, we have a motion on the table.
This is on the motion to amend.
A motion to amend, okay.
Roll call. Alderman Morgan?
No.
Alderman Flynn?
No.
Alderman Wozniak?
Reluctantly, yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Carrie, three, two.
No. Mayor, you, it takes four affirmative votes in order to pass, so, Mayor, if you want the amendment to pass, you can vote yes. If you do not want the amendment to pass, you do not have to vote.
I do not have to vote. I will not vote.
So the amendment fails, three in favor, two against, as counterintuitive as that sounds. That's what happened. So now you're back to the original resolution.
I make a motion to pass the original resolution.
Seconder?
Second.
Discussion?
Okay. Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Reluctantly, yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Reluctantly, yes.
Alderman King?
Okay, yes.
Motion, Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. Okay. Next resolution is approving a contract with CEI Engineering for engineering services related to improving the Lower Reardon Road corridor and for other purposes. Mr. Sunnison, this is your bailiwick.
Mayor, over the past few years, we've had private developments that have improved Reardon Road. Feedback from the public is that those aren't necessarily the best operational standards that we, they would like to see. In order to improve the safety and functionality of Reardon Road, the administration went out for a proposal from CEI Engineering to look at several items, including possibly expansion of the road service, different lane configurations, improvement of a trail. And so this contract that you have in front of you this evening for a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars would kick off that process. The funds would come from already, I'm sorry, it would be split over two years. Once, one portion of it would be paid for and currently budgeted fifteen funds in my department's professional contracts line item, and then that would be carried over into the 2016 operating budget.
Questions for Mr. Sunnison?
How much of this is being pushed by the trail and the parking area and stuff? Is it going to be engineered or by one of the hell?
Alderman Wozniak, it's more about the functionality of the business area. We have seen, due to some very successful restaurants, an increase in the amount of traffic coming from those businesses. A lot of our businesses have complained that the median that's present right now interrupts traffic flows and even more customers coming to them. So this is an attempt to come to a community-derived solution to those very problems.
And the length of this contract?
The length, sir?
How, when will it be done? When will we get our?
We're projecting ninety percent completion on the contract, construction documents, by August of next year.
I think it's definitely needed, because I'm not sure we did a great job when we did that the first time, and I was part of that. So I would like to see it fixed if possible. So I think it's a good idea.
Any other thoughts? I have a motion to approve, please. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is approving a contract with Plymouth Engineering, PLLC, for engineering services related to the reconstruction of Lower Suits Us Drive and for other purposes. For those of you that may not be familiar with Suits Us, it is a road that runs off of Highway Seventy-One down near the Artistic Retreat Center. You may have seen it, especially after a large rainstorm, and we have lots of gravel being pushed out onto Seventy-One, which has to be cleared away for fear that someone will stand on the brakes and go sliding into traffic. This is actually a connector that goes up to Cunningham, and it is Lower Suits Us, and then it meets Crestview, Cedar View, excuse me. Cedar Crest, I knew, yeah. And it's all unimproved, and it would be nice to pave the whole thing someday. However, we're going to do it a little bit at a time. The first step is to have the engineering done on the lower portion, so that's from Seventy-One up until it meets the other road and Suits Us curls around and goes to the right. Particularly down at the Seventy-One end, it is extremely narrow, so it will involve the moving of the Carroll Electric poles. It'll probably involve the moving of the water pipes that's used by the old Bella Vista. All things that have to be determined through the engineering. So this is what we're looking at right now, is to try and at least get a little bit ahead of the curve on this lower portion of Suits Us. Are there any questions for Chris at all?
I do have a question. Who is responsible for moving the Carroll Electric poles?
That would come at our costs if it is deemed necessary by the engineer.
Same with the water?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
What is the traffic count on that road right now every day?
Chief, I think it was-
I thought I'd heard it was three hundred.
It's about three hundred and a quarter, isn't it, when we put the radar up there? And I believe not only does it have vehicle traffic, it gets chicken trucks as well going up and down there?
There is some heavy traffic on the road.
If it were a good road, it would double in traffic very quickly.
Yes, it would.
I could use it much easier than coming out, and that's from the west side of Lake Windsor. So you would pick up an awful lot of traffic if it were a good road. I won't take my car down it.
Yeah, it's hard to believe it's three hundred waves.
Yeah, it's really hard. It would more than double, I'm sure, quickly.
Can we open it up all the way up to Cunningham?
Not this particular part.
No, not this particular one.
This particular project only-
But Suits Us runs all the way up to Cunningham.
Yes, that is correct.
So if we ever get it all completely up to snuff, it'll be another main corridor down to Seventy-One and take a lot of traffic off of Oldham and Reardon.
Yes.
Sweet.
Sunset?
Do I understand that what we're passing on the amount included here is just for the engineering work?
Yes.
Yes, that's right. Other questions? Motion to approve, please.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman King, I guess, did I get King? No, Alderman King, excuse me.
Did you get the King? Got it.
Five zero.
Alrighty, the next resolution is approving amounts of lanes to be certified to the Benton County Tax Collector to gain certain real properties as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances by the city of Bella Vista and for other purposes. We, from time to time, get people calling in saying that a certain piece of property is not being mowed or taken care of, and we go through a process, and if the owner still doesn't respond, then we go out, not us, we actually hire a landscaping company, and they go out, and we then put the charge on their tax bill through this routine that we're about to go through now. Counselor?
We need to, just to verify, Chris, that the property owners that are on the list, they received notice of the night's hearing, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Preceding the resolution in the package is our invoices that we have sent out to the various property owners, and at the very bottom indicates there is a public hearing scheduled for this evening.
Mayor, you need to open a public hearing, see if anyone wants to discuss this.
Plus one has been paid, so do we have to amend the package?
We will, but let's have, let's open and close a public hearing, and then we can do that.
All right. We'll now move into public hearing and ask if anyone has any discussion. Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing.
And there, Blair, we need a motion to amend, and which one, were we going to take off, Chris?
We're taking off $59.41 for two of Sore Lane.
So we appreciate a motion to amend to strike that.
So move.
Thank you.
Second? Can you get a second?
Yeah, Frank and I'll... Thank you.
Need a vote on that.
So we're going to vote on the amend.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carry.
Okay, now we go back to the original resolution as amended, and we need a motion to approve that, please.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Carry, five zero.
Thank you, the next resolution is establishing fees for certain planning applications and for other purposes. Mr. Sunnison, this one is yours as well.
Yes, sir, earlier in the year, we passed zoning regulations that created a planned zoning district. At the same time, we failed to recognize that there would be some filing fees associated with that. After doing a bit of research across our sister cities and other governmental entities, we've derived that we would like to be in the middle of the pack regarding planning fees, and so we are asking the council to set that particular fee at $500. Further, we have, for about two years now, had a minor zoning variance that is a procedural administrative item that allows us as a staff to make minor changes to the zoning code. We have operated with a zero collection of fees on that particular application, and we've had quite a few in the last few years. Regardless, we're asking for a $25 fee on that particular item. And then the last item is something that we typically see associated with waiver applications. Those are just about as much work for us as a staff, as the planned zoning district or the large-scale development, so we're asking for a $25 increase in that fee from $50 to $75.
Okay, any questions? Motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carry, five zero.
Thank you, the next resolution is amending the 2015 city budget to appropriate an additional amount not to exceed $20,000 from the general fund reserves to fund the purchase of a replacement dump truck for the street department. Unfortunately, I guess it was the Friday of heydays, one of our drivers was coming back from picking up a load of asphalt, and he lost control of the truck, and the truck was totaled. Thankfully, he was not hurt. Superintendent Button has been scouring the web and other sources, trying to find a used truck as a replacement so that we can get a plow on it for the winter time. He feels certain that he can find one for not to exceed $20,000, is that still correct, Superintendent?
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any questions at all?
Do you need to kick back an insurance company?
Mike, insurance?
Yeah, we're going to get an insurance settlement for it. Do you have an idea what's going to be? Uh, it was $7,900.
And we did also have the trailer that was totaled? No, I'm sorry, that was for the, that was for the backhoe, wasn't it?
That was the backhoe.
Okay.
This is one of our older trucks that we inherited from P O I.
It is?
We bought it at auction, a P O I auction.
Well, kudos if you can find a dump truck for $20,000, you can't find a good used car for that one.
Any further discussion? We have a resolution, or sorry, a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you. Second? Thank you, Mr. Wozniak.
Okay. Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carry, five zero.
Thank you, the final resolution is amending the meeting schedule of the Bella Vista City Council work session and regular session for November 2015. We, at the beginning of the year, have an organizational meeting, and we didn't discover that there would be a clash with our meetings and with Thanksgiving, so at the work session, we decided that we would have the work session in November, on November the 12th, followed four days later by the regular session, so that would be the 16th, in order to keep that Thanksgiving week free, because some people were going to be away. Any discussion? Sorry, sir?
Just to highlight that, for those that attend most of our meetings, make sure you understand the 12th is not a Monday.
Good point.
We changed that work session to a Thursday to give the staff a little more time to get their work done in order to get the information to the council. So the work session will be Thursday, the regular meeting like this one the next Monday.
Good point, thank you, Alderman. Anybody have any thoughts or suggestions? Motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Carry, five zero.
Before I read the meetings and announcements, is there any other discussion? Meetings and announcements, the next city council work session will be Thursday, November the 12th, 5:30 in the evening in the city hall conference room, and the next regular meeting of the city council will be Monday, November 16th, 6:30, right here in the Legion Hall. The Planning Commission work session will be Wednesday, October the 28th, 4:00 p.m. in the city hall conference room. The Planning Commission regular meeting will be held November the 9th at 6:30 in the evening in the city hall conference room, and the Public Safety Committee will have its next meeting December the 9th at 9:00 in the city hall conference room. Thank you, we are adjourned.